I'd like to call this meeting to order. We're going to begin with a moment of silence and the pledge led by Ms. Satterfield. Please stand. The pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, looking in the audience, I don't believe I see any elected officials. Please raise your hand if I've overlooked you. I do see someone that's almost back on our payroll, Mr. Ron McPherson, and we are delighted to have you in the crowd and listening in and look forward to your return to Knox County Schools. Board members, there's just one reminder here. Our February meetings are scheduled on February 6th for the work session and the 13th for the regular session, and both of them will be 5:00, and they'll be here in the main assembly room. Are there any changes? Anyone would like to submit for the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Approved by Norman, second by Horn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent's report, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. A few updates since we last met. I'm pleased to announce that I've appointed Ron McPherson to oversee finance and human resources operation for the district. Many of you know that Ron was our executive director of finance from 2005 to 2015, and more recently served as chief financial officer for the Emerald Youth Foundation. I'm excited to welcome Ron back to KCS and confident that he'll do a great job. I told Ronnie, he might not want to stay for the budget presentation, just in case he changes his mind after we do that. But he'll be here for the long haul, and I'm just glad to have Ron back with us. Some important events are coming up in the next few weeks for students and employees. The district will host a career day for middle and high school students on Tuesday, February 12th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. This free event will be held at Knoxville Expo Center on Clinton Highway and is hosted in partnership with Pellicippi State Community College and Partners in Education. The Teacher of the Year Dinner will be held on Tuesday evening, February 19th, at the Knoxville Convention Center. This event is a great opportunity to recognize some of our outstanding educators, and I'd like to invite each member of the board to join us. The KCS Recruitment Fair will take place on Saturday, March 2nd, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at Central High School. Candidates for all classified and certified positions, including food service, transportation, and custodial, are encouraged to attend. On-site interviews will be conducted for candidates who are certified in high-need areas. We're always looking for talented team members, so please help us spread the word about this event. Finally, I'd like to congratulate the students from Farragut Middle School who won first place in the Second Annual Volunteer State Science Bowl. In addition to a $300 cash prize and plaque, the winning team is eligible to attend the U.S. Department of Energy National Science Bowl Finals this spring in Washington, D.C. Sponsored by the Eastman Foundation, the competition brought together 26 teams representing 16 schools across the state. Students put their skills to the test in the areas of astronomy, biology, chemistry, physics, earth science, general science, and mathematics. In addition to preparing students for the national competition, the event encourages the pursuit of educational and career paths in science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. Again, I congratulate these students from Farragut Middle School who did an outstanding job of representing KCS. Madam Chair, members of the board, that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Any questions or comments? All right, moving right along. The next item is our discussion, discussion, I might add, discussion of strategic plan. Mr. Thomas?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're pleased, I think everyone received a copy or draft of the strategic plan. We're very pleased to present that to you this evening. We do realize that we're awaiting your discussion, conversation, input, any changes that you might wish to have for the strategic plan. What we did, as you recall, at our extended work session back a few months ago, we talked about strategic plan. We talked about the three priorities that we've been discussing now for some time in terms of increasing student achievement, eliminating disparities, and building a positive culture. So much work was done around the strategic plan. I think beginning last January, we had nine community meetings, and also there was opportunity for input online. And we did get many comments regarding the strategic plan online. So what we tried to do is look at the priorities, make those priorities our goals, take the information that we gathered from the community input sessions, and then also there was another group, I think, that presented a report to the board back later on in the process. We took some of that information, tried to incorporate it into the strategic plan. Right now, of course, it doesn't include the metrics. We do have some metrics developed for the plan, but we wanted to wait and get your feedback, I guess, in terms of the plan, and then come back with the metrics that will support this strategic plan. So I think Carly is gonna talk with you a few minutes about it, but at this time, I'm just turning it over to Carly and her comments, and then let the board make the comments that you want to make and give us the direction you would like for us to go. Thank you.
So, can you hear me?
Would you be more comfortable at the podium?
Yeah, that's totally fine. So basically, like the superintendent said, you have a copy of what was mailed to you before the break. And so the process in which where we got to here is basically, we took your input from the board retreat, and I guess at your direction, the superintendent met with his directors and asked all of us to kind of go back over the goals and realign them with his three priorities. And so we collected all of that, and we put together this draft summary of what that looks like, and we hope to get your feedback. And if this is something that you like, we can move forward with some additional metrics and supporting documents.
All right, thank you, thank you. Do we have any discussion on what's been presented to us? So seeing no lights, I am assuming that everyone is pleased? Ms. Horn?
I'll start. Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, I just have a couple of things. Under Ready Graduates, the ACT plans, will that be a by-school plan? It doesn't say by-school, but would that be per, for each school? Each individual school have a plan?
Going back, yes, answers is, yes.
Okay, so, you know, I wouldn't mind if we add that in, because I think it communicates more to the public that we have a, not just a system-wide goal, but that we have a goal for each school.
All right. All right. Ms. Horn brings a good point. If you'll hold on one minute, Ms. Bab. The suggestion was made about just going section by section, so, and I appreciate that. So Increasing Student Achievement, Section 1. Ms. Bab?
Okay. I have a couple of things. Under Career Pathways, there's the bullet about align CTE courses offerings at each middle and high school to ensure progress towards industry certifications. Only concern I have about this, I think within the high schools, it's really good. Unfortunately, we do not have a direct feeder pattern, and I look at especially a school like Northwest Middle that feeds into so many different high schools. And so I guess, you know, I think it's a great idea. I just, in realistic, I'm concerned about that and how it's implemented when our middles and our high schools don't really match in a lot of the places. Like I know South Knoxville is very fortunate, more to be aligned than other places. But, so that was a little bit of a concern of mine. And then one other one is, and I think it comes under this Ready Graduate part. We talk a lot about educating students and families on how to navigate all aspects of college entry and AP and IB and stuff like that. But as we're talking so much about CTE, I feel like there also needs to be a component, or I hope us as a school district need to be educating parents and students about career pathways and that. So I think there needs to be a match on the career side with that college entry side of it, too, if that makes sense.
Perhaps that would be something to be considered, another bullet under Career Pathways?
Either Career Pathways or...
But I see, I see exactly what you're saying.
Either under the Ready Graduates, too, because I almost feel like it's matching the number-two bullet about how to navigate. I feel like our parents need the same sort of support on the CTE pathways.
I think it could just be added to number-three bullet.
Maybe so.
All righty. Are you finished, Ms. Bab?
I am, sorry.
Uh-huh. Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To me, you know, our ultimate goal, of course, is just to have kids get smarter in school, increase their academic capabilities. So when I'm looking at this kind of stuff, I'm always curious about, why do we not have a stated ACT goal? Since we've recognized that we've had a flat ACT composite for years and years, and it just seems like we don't have any written goal for ACT. That's the ultimate measure of academic achievement within the system. And so I'm just, you know, we've brought this up before. I'm just curious about it. So if you say something like, "Create and implement an ACT plan for grades 9 through 12," I'm like, well, what's your plan? What's your goal? What's the plan to meet the goal? And certainly, that occurs at a school level. So whatever the, it seems like whatever your composite ACT score is at your school, say at a high school, then you should have a goal to increase that to a certain degree, and you should have a plan to implement, to achieve that goal. So that's my question, is do we have goals? Do we have stated objectives for ACT? And if we do, where are they, and where are the plans that go with them?
Mr. Thomas, would you like to address that?
Yes, and of course, I think in terms of, once we get into the metrics, that will be identified, I think, at that point. But certainly, there's not, we can put a district-wide or goal in there. I know when we talk about our Ready Graduates, you know, the state goal is to have a 21 on the ACT. You know, certainly would like for it to be better than 21. We have several schools right now that do have 21, five or six maybe that exceed, have it 21 or exceed, but majority do not. So we can, we can, we can put that in there. And then, and also, I guess in terms of the measurability of it, what we'd like that district-wide goal to be next year, and then the year after that, and then the year after that. I know the goal is to get the Ready Graduates 75%. Again, I'd rather have 100% Ready Graduates, but 75% of our graduates to be Ready Graduates. So we can, we can add that in. I don't think that's, that's an issue at all. But as far as the measurements, the metrics would go, I think it would be more specific within the metrics, but we can, again, add something overall to it with a district score. I don't know if that answered?
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Yes, yes.
I just, has there been discussion about, about those types of composite scores at each school level? Because we know we've got this range from, you know, throughout the system, from some fairly low composite scores for some schools compared to others. And so is there, is there some kind of plan there?
There is, and maybe Dr. Reiswick can talk about it a little bit clearer than I can. But in terms of a plan, each school submitted their, a plan to us in terms of what their activities are for this year in order to increase those scores. So I've got that by, that information by high school, by each of our high schools. But also, you know, it even extends down to middle school. Now, we're piloting some of the ACT work at our middle, at several middle schools, too. So I don't know if Dr. Reiswick can add more to, more to that.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I think a couple of things with that, what they do, each school does, because they're using different things for that. Some have ACT prep classes, some do after-school courses, some do kind of boot camps for that, leading up to it. So it kind of depends, and we leave that different for, again, we serve a diverse group of schools, so they have different, different ways they do those things. I think in looking at the different products that are there, what we still see as the primary driver for ACT score composites is still economically disadvantaged. I mean, that's a big part of that, because the ACT is built such that it's kind of a culmination of what students do over their whole career. So it's not surprising that our feeder patterns that have the lower, like literacy rates and things at their elementary school also are the ones that have a lower ACT composite. So, you know, so just kind of not a one-size-fits-all when we do those sorts of things. And what we've seen, if a student has a 25 or a 26, sometimes those ACT prep classes may help them figure out more of the system to be able to get to a 27. But if a student has a 13, you know, it's a little harder, because we're talking about some knowledge gap that's happened at that point. So really, what we're doing as far as early literacy and working toward those kinds of things are our best in those places where numbers are really low. I would just say, too, as far as looking at things, we have looked at Ready Graduate. One, because the state currently has multiple ways to show and demonstrate that. You know, through, a student may have a 20 on an ACT but has earned five college credits while they're in high school, like those sorts of things, or even industry certification. So I think it's important that we look at that full body of Ready Graduate. But all of our schools are looking at their composite score and submitting plans that they're evaluating through the secondary office as far as what we can do. And in places where we see improvements, there's two schools I can think of this past year off their numbers. You know, we're trying to look at what they're doing and see if that's something that is scalable or makes sense to those principals.
Mr. Norman, to your point, just for purpose of clarity and consensus, I think what I was hearing was that specifics would be defined under the metrics at the bottom. So if, if those specific things you were asking for, in fact, were included in the metrics section, which would be another document, would that, would that meet the concern that you had about?
Yeah, I think that would be fine, but especially for our schools that are, that are struggling in terms of how we, how they do with ACT. Those schools, I think that we should have some kind of defined goal and a operating plan for that school to achieve some measure of increase in terms of that composite. So I'd just like that discussion to take place. So as long as that's in the metric, that's, that's what I'm looking for.
And to Ms. Horn's point, when under Ready Graduates, she talked about create and implement an ACT plan for grades 9 through 12 for each school. That also is another definer of each, of something, it needs to be specific per school, which I think is what I heard you asking for also. All right. Ms. Owen?
I guess I'm a little concerned about what we're looking at right now. Because I really expected to have metrics by now. I thought we were going to be considering this toward adoption. And so it's really concerning to look at it without any of the metrics. And it's something that our evaluation committee has been waiting on for quite some time. So that's making that, it's getting pushed back further and further and further. And in January, that is quite late to be still not looking at the metrics that we need to be considering. So I'm, I'm very concerned that we don't have that yet. In our October meeting, we were told that we would have a draft by December, and this is a draft of the summary, but it doesn't include those metric pieces. And in our October meeting, it said that we would be, the strategic plan would be considered at our January meeting, which is the meeting passed already. And so I really would have expected metrics by then, and that we still don't have those. I would like to see those no later than our February meeting. We need to see the metrics that we're talking about. All right, on to that increasing student achievement. A dedicated microteam is not something that I could support at this time. We have a lot of anecdotal information from our microteams, but I would need to see something really concrete before I would even consider that. I think our teachers are not going to support increasing a larger coaching structure when we need to be increasing classroom teachers to decrease class size. I don't think this is the best use of our, of our people. Also, under assigning RTI coaches at each school to assist their data teams in determining student interventions, I would like to see our RTI coaches working with students, not assisting our data teams. So that is also a large concern. And that's all I have in that section.
All right. And to your point of the specific metrics, Mr. Thomas, who would be most appropriate to, to address that? I do think something's out there, we just haven't seen it.
We've got, and Carly, John, two of y'all can jump in and help me out. I know we did, we developed metrics around the other plan, I guess. So we've still got some of those, those metrics that work with this plan. And there may be some additional metrics we might need to look at. I think operations, Russ, I believe you developed some metrics around that. HR, I think Scott metrics. I don't, it's not a big issue to put those together. I think what we were waiting for is, is some discussion by the board to say, hey, this looks like what we're talking about. Go forth and bring the rest of it back to us. So that was, you know, that's my fault if that didn't happen like the way that it should. But we, I know there's been a lot of discussion about the plan. We didn't know exactly whether the board would like this plan. Would you want to start over, or what? So we, we were just delaying a bit just for that reason. I don't know, again, Carly, or John, or Russ, or Scott, y'all want to weigh in? Joe, I know there's finance, I believe there's finance metrics. The budget, the finance department submitted some metrics around finance. So it's, it's not, not a big job to bring those back to the board, I don't think, at this point. But we were just waiting, basically, on an endorsement to say, hey, we, we like this. We think you're on the right path. Bring it back to us with the metrics, and, and we'll be happy to vote on it, so.
All right. So that sounds like it's something that can be provided, Ms. Owen, at our, our next meeting. Would that, is that fair, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I think this is, aligns much more with what we were requesting. And I think it's much easier for the public to understand. But without that other piece, I think it's very hard for us to say what we're really looking at here. I know the, the first version that we looked at, there were people that I talked to in the community who didn't even want to try to read it, because it was so massive. And I've not had that reaction at all from this one. It seems like this one is much more user-friendly. It's, language is much clearer. It, it just makes more sense for a layperson especially to be looking at it. So I think that, yes, this is what we were looking for. I just don't know how to, how to really consider it without, without more specifics, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Ms. Owen. This is, I think, much easier to read and to understand what the, the big goals are. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the work that went into that. Back to Mr. Norman's point about the ACT scores. I guess as I'm looking at this, you know, I understand that the, having those performance metrics will answer a lot of those questions and a lot of those concerns. Should, and I would like some feedback on this from other board members. The strategic objectives at the top, would it be more clear if these are the specific objectives that we're looking for? For instance, the goal ACT score for each student. It doesn't even have to say for the district in that little objective, but for each student, that each student be at a 21. That the objective for literacy on the first one, that that be the actual proficiency rate, or that we want each student to be proficient in reading. But maybe make those objectives, kind of what we're talking about, more specific to the point. Maybe that's what, what we're missing here. So if anybody, and Dr. Reiswick, if you want to comment on that also, but if anybody, I mean, what do you guys think about, is that, would that help enhance it? So that we could, when you look at this, you see exactly what the objective is. And then you go to the performance metrics to see what the specifics are broken down.
To your comment, Ms. Horn, the, the way that this is broken out, objectives, initiatives, and metrics. I hear, I hear what you're suggesting. Objectives, if we get that specific in objectives, then sound more like goals. So, and I guess it's, I guess I like the broader, objective to me is a more of a broader address. As, the same with, what initiatives will we use to try to reach these broad objectives? And the way we're going to know that we met them is with our performance metric. That's just my, you know, my look at it. But certainly, you know, we can look, we can look further at it. Ms. Bab?
Sure. I'm realizing my notes are kind of all over the place, so that's why I'm coming back to it. A couple of things, when we're starting to talk about the metrics, and maybe this is going a little bit to what Ms. Owens was talking about. I mean, I do like the fact that we're talking about the overall structure, maybe before y'all get too in-depth into the metrics. But my thought, and maybe I'm wrong about this, is under the strategic initiatives, and then we have like all the bullet points, that each of these bullet points would have metrics to go along with them, I'm hoping. So I don't know if that's the, the thought or not, but I am hoping that. And I do hope that, to me, I think that our metrics need to be pushing our district. And so I hope when we're looking at metrics, it's not necessarily just the easy win. But, you know, probably, maybe we won't do it, but this is what we're, the challenge. So that was one of the things. But under this increased student achievement, one other thing that I don't know where this might fit into, and maybe it's under personalized learning, is we have talked so much about magnet program... magnet programs, and this has just been on our radar, that when I looked at the plan, I don't feel like I saw magnet programs addressed anywhere. And I do think we, that should be included somewhere. And I think part of that is an ongoing assessment of what is working with our magnet programs. Do we need to expand them? You know, and just an ongoing focus, so that I would hope that, since they are part of our school system in many different ways, that they are mentioned. And I guess I'm thinking maybe it's under personalized learning. I'm not really sure.
Thank you. Mr. McMillan?
Actually, Mr. Norman was before me, if you. Okay. Thank you. I was just going to make a comment in reference to ACT. And as long as we require everyone to take the ACT realistically, no matter what we do, along the lines of what Dr. Rieswick said, they, some people just don't have the background to achieve anywhere as close to 20, or 21, or 19. But, it does concern me that we have these kids, and we have them in every school, every high school, I'm sure, that just go through the motions, they just know that they have to take it. I'm just going to go down there and mark something. Are we willing to look at establishing some kind of a minimum score? It could be a very, you know, a very liberal score. But with that, unless there's some penalty, I guess what I'm saying is, the only way to stop a kid from doing that, in my opinion, is there has to be some kind of penalty. If the kid knows there's no penalty, I just have to mark this, and I walk across the stage, that's 13 years, no matter what I make on it, you know, you're not going, you can have teachers, guidance counselors, coaches, everybody preach to them, and they're going to blow you off. You know, they're just not going to pay any attention, unless there is some kind of thing. And like I said, it could be very, very low. But in my opinion, we should establish, or at least look at establishing, some kind of a minimum score that they realistically could attain unless they're, you know, some kind of very special ed or something like that, that would provide a little bit of incentive to maybe at least put forth the effort. Thank you.
So, for clarification, are you stating that that's something that you might want staff to look at under the metrics, the performance?
I don't know where else you would look at it while we're talking about the upper end, and we're talking about boosting the score, you know. As I was saying, rising tide raises all boats, so to speak.
And I'm, forgive me, board, I'm trying to be real specific on this as staff takes notes, so that they'll have, you know, some specific guidance on what might need to be changed. Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think Mike's got a good idea. We all know that kids will do that. They'll draw Christmas trees with their whatever, just to get through the process. And it seems like we could come up for a regular ed diploma, some minimum score. It's 15, or 14, or whatever it is. And that would stop the, this kind of randomness type thing that kids will do. I certainly think that's a good idea. My other observation has to do with literacy, and again, trying to be, trying to have some specific goals, specific measurable, you know, something that's tangible, that we can shoot for. And as regards literacy, we know that the, one of our major black eyes is the literacy rate in the high poverty schools. So, if that's at close to 80%, I think that's where we were failing. We had 80% of the kids at the third grade level were not classified as literate in high poverty schools. And so, that's just amazing to me that we don't have a very specific goal about a liter, what we expect in these high poverty schools, how we're going to, we're going to change that number. And what is the number that we're shooting for? And what is the operating plan to achieve that? 80% illiteracy, third grade, high poverty, of course, we can't live with that, but we need something specific.
Thank you, Mr. Norman.
It's not working.
It must not be working. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You'll just have to raise your hand. I'm sorry. It wasn't on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me just first say that I think I like this document, and I think that they did a good job in taking what we said at the retreat and bringing it back to us in a very user-friendly way that, because to me, I see this as more the introduction to Knox County Schools, what we're about, what we're wanting to achieve. So, if what I'm hearing is, the discussion tonight, if the staff can make the changes that the board's recommending, then we would go forward, which is what you all have been waiting on, and hopefully have some metrics for us by the February meeting. Is that correct?
That's great.
Okay. So, I think that's, that is, and I think those metrics are highly important, I think. But I think to get, what we had before for a five-year plan was a large book that had a lot of detail that would be overwhelming to anybody looking it up and picking it up for the first time. So, I like this if we could just have the metrics added to it. To Ms. Babb's point, I would be fine with adding the magnet schools, but I don't want to limit us to the term magnet schools. I like the fact that we could mention that we have different options or whatever. I know that it is, there are specifics spelled out under the third bullet point under Ready Graduates, and that's okay. But I just hate to limit us to a term. So, if there's some way, I mean, I would support it if the board's will is to have magnet schools listed in there, but I would rather it be more generic so we can pursue other avenues as well, or, you know, and continue those, but not just limit us to that, so.
Thank you. My comment before moving along, I really support what you said, Ms. Babb, about this is a document to introduce our schools. And I just would like to caution the board that we not get too bogged down in the specifics. That can happen through the metrics. That can happen through a planning document as opposed to a policy document. This isn't policy, but they're two very different pieces. And this really is more of a, this is what we're about, and this is what we represent. So, I just encourage the board to keep that in mind as we're making some of these recommendations. I think one of the issues we had before, to your point, Ms. Owen, is about how the first document just went on and on and on, that was, that was, that was tough too, because we did, we got bogged down in all of that. So, all right. Any more comments on the first section, increasing student achievement? I'll move on to the eliminating disparities. Any comments? Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a quick question. I just kind of want to, you okay? I just want to kind of see what this, how it will play out, or what we're thinking about as a district. So, under organizational infrastructure, the create a minority educator advisory council. Who would make up this council, and what are the thoughts of, what's the guiding that, et cetera?
That, I think the idea around that was our minority teachers. I know I've spoken with one of our teachers who represents PECA group for the teachers about this. So, I think we need to do more, are we doing all we can do? I don't think we are, but just getting some ideas and some thoughts from our minority educators. And so, that's pretty much.
Okay, so it'll be made up of Knox County minority teachers?
Yes.
Okay. So, I wasn't sure if it was a community group or within the Knox County school system. And you all will take the input to move the district forward ideally?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the final point, under organizational infrastructure, update all job descriptions to include cultural awareness and proficiency as a criterion for employment. I guess I'm just a little bit concerned about how, what will we be doing to measure that if we're interviewing a candidate for employment?
Okay, I was making a note there, Ms. Horn, too, on the previous item we were talking about, because, so could you repeat that again?
Sure. On the third point, it says update all job descriptions.
Oh, yes.
What, how will we, you know, how would we go about ensuring that? How would that be measured?
Oh, I don't, I think Scott has some ideas about that, so if we could let him address it.
I've got Dr. Brooke Denard-Roster, who can actually speak to those things in terms of what's been asked.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Brooke Denard-Roster. Thanks for having me. Thank you, Scott. So, what we were looking at is, one, it's basically revising all of the district's current job descriptions to include a component of cultural competency, so that it's already embedded within the job description. So, then people who are therefore applying for those positions understand that that is an expectation of their employment with the district. So, it's just basically the process of going through and updating all of our existing job descriptions to include a component of cultural competency as a requirement for employment with the district.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Ms. Satterfield?
Well, I get, come back, Brooke, sorry. I guess I'm curious, I'm still asking Susan's question. So, I understand updating the job descriptions, but how are we, like, what's the measurement to indicate, okay, we hired this person? And what's the, how do we know that they're following cultural competency? And how do we know if that, is it just more of an expectation coming in? Or is there actual measurements that's going to go behind it?
So, it's kind of a built-in accountability structure. So, by having it outlined and detailed in the requirements of the job description and position, in the event that there were to be an issue or something that were to arise that would demonstrate a lack of cultural competency, or a lack of alignment with the district's views about what cultural competency looks like from a teacher, then we'd be able to refer back to that job description and remind whoever the person was, or whatever position it was, that that was a component of their hiring, or there being an employment of, an employee of the district. So, it's more of a built-in accountability structure, so that when we do have incidences or when an issue does arise, we've got something that we can go back to. It also would align with the cultural competency training that's currently being done across the district. So, that would kind of be one of the metrics that could be used in terms of determining effectiveness.
Ms. Owen?
Has that been discussed with the PECA team?
No, to my knowledge, we've not had a conversation with the PECA team about that. So, that's something we can certainly do at our next meeting.
Ms. Babb, did you, okay. Any more comments on that second section? All right. Moving along to section three. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Babb?
Yes, I did. On section two, down under, and I don't know where this fits, but it seems like everything about recruitment and things like that is under organizational infrastructure. And I definitely support the hiring and trying to get rid of biases and exclusion, and trying to diversify our staff. But one thing I feel like I'm never seeing is that we really want excellent teachers in our school system. And that, to me, is a huge goal. And I feel like there need to be metrics behind that on how we're going about getting excellent teachers, not only getting them, but retaining them. So, I would like that in there somewhere, because I just feel like that's so important to moving our kids forward to where we go, is the excellence of our teachers. So, that's one point. Also, under student supports, I feel like there's a lot about training on the cultural competencies, PBIS and everything like that. But one other thing I don't feel like I'm seeing is a goal of further supporting our students through social workers, guidance counselors, and mental health professionals. And I feel like that's one of the big needed supports for our students. There's a lot about training our staff that's already there, but I feel like there's also the need for how are we strategically going to work to get more support within each school along those lines? So, that's point two. And then, the third point I had is, and maybe this is embedded in here, and I don't need to call this out, but I do feel like the special ed population is never really specifically talked about, and maybe it comes under equity of student access, maybe it's implied under improved support for underserved student populations. And so, maybe, Mr. Thomas, you can speak to that. But I just feel like, looking through our whole plan, I didn't feel like that population really was ever addressed. And if it is, just kind of in a more broader sense, then that's fine. I just was wondering about that.
Do you have any comments, Mr. Thomas, on that?
No, other than just taking some notes, make sure we can reflect what's being asked.
Ms. Satterfield?
I think to Virginia's point of making sure that we put excellent teachers on here, under narrow achievement gap, I think that that might be a good place to fit that in, because that's where it's kind of talking about incentives, et cetera, for teachers who move the needle. I just want to just put it on the radar as we move forward, because this is a five-year plan that, under student support, where we have PBIS and restorative practices for each school. If we're going to go on and adopt this document in a five-year plan with this restorative practices, then I would like the district to really support, ensuring that there's more training for restorative practices, if this is something that we're going to commit to and keep it in there.
Thank you, Ms. Satterfield. I think we are actually looking at probably a three-year plan instead of five, just for your information. Any other comments on section two? I don't know that this hits the points, Ms. Babb, that you were talking about as far as excellence in teachers. In our, in the increasing student achievement, we do talk about promote student learning and instruction delivered by highly-trained teachers. That's, I know that's not the same wording you were looking for, but that might be a place to change your word or two.
And maybe there are metrics that can support that. But I, you know, I think there is talk about recruitment on biases and things. I just think overall, I mean, that is the number one thing that is going to move the dial, is having, we already have excellent teachers, but just the continued recruitment of them.
And then, in the second, eliminating disparities, the strategic objective, again, not near as specific, but kind of steps around the promote social and emotional learning and well-being for the whole child. And of course, we know under that, you know, achieving that objective means more support personnel. But to your point, maybe it does need to be more.
And maybe, once again, it's a metrics underneath that, too. I just.
Support that. Okay. All right. Moving on to section three, creating a positive culture. Ms. Satterfield?
Virginia, silly. I want to kind of look at, so I just kind of want to see, well, get an understanding of what the district culture survey, I know Superintendent, you and I had a conversation about this, but what would this look like? Who is included in providing the feedback? My preference would be. in providing the feedback? My preference would be a district-wide, like a 360-type of survey where you provide anonymous feedback, et cetera, where principals and teachers can give honest feedback, but be still secure in their positions. And so I just want to kind of talk about the district culture survey and what that looks like, and what's the goal of, that we're trying to get out of that?
Well, I know, I think, was it last year, Dr. Rieswick, I think REA did a survey, a district-wide survey, and teachers, principals, well, all employees, I believe, were involved in that. And taking that information, of course, in terms of building a positive culture, seeing where we are currently and what kinds of things that we'd be doing in order to enhance our culture. So I know I've looked at that information, but I would envision we do do that again, just through our REA. I think, and I don't know, Dr. Rieswick, did we provide that report to the board? I can't remember. We can go back and look to see, but, and send that to you, too, so you can have an idea of what, I know families, we even did surveys where families, I think, also responded. So we'll get you that information, but I would envision doing something similar again. And like we talked about, too, from a central office perspective, how, do the school, what is the perception? Do the schools feel like, you know, yes, we do have a responsive central office that provides us with the support and resources as minimum as they are, but gives us the kinds of supports that we're looking for from a central office? So that helps us to say, okay, yeah, we, you know, we're, you know, we're doing, our stakeholders believe we're doing a good job, or no, we're not doing a good job, and so what are the areas we need to improve in? So that's kind of the idea for me about the survey information.
Ms. Bab?
Okay, I have one comment under, we are in creative positive culture, right?
Yes.
On the safety and security, our one bullet point on there really deals mostly with the SRO officers and personnel there. I do feel like, and I guess I've just seen it in my own district with some lockdowns and things like that, developing on the security side, some kind of communication plan with parents and students. And I say that realizing we can't share what's going on with all of them. But I do think that, and I especially see it at the high school level, where there are students that are not always with an adult, you know, the entire school day. I just would like something added about how we communicate something about safety with our parents, and it's an ongoing, and this kind of goes with metrics, that, you know, that parents can understand the ongoing need to change this. I mean, it's, you know, it probably changes weekly, depending on what's going on. But I feel like the safety just needs to be expanded a little bit more beyond just the fact that we're dealing with our SRO officers. And then I do have one question, and this is my lack of acronym knowledge, on under stakeholder communication engagement, what are PACs, TACs, and FACs?
I could take an educated guess on most of them, but I'll give that to you, Dr. Rieswick.
Thank you.
Pack, tack, fact.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. There, the different advisory councils, we have a principal advisory council that meets monthly, that we bring things before them, a teacher advisory council that Mr. Thomas meets with on a monthly basis, and then a family advisory council that Ms. Tammy Campbell leads, and they meet monthly as well, to kind of talk about the same issues prior to decisions being made.
Great, okay. I knew what all those were, I just didn't know what the acronyms meant. And then my one other one, under the stakeholder communication engagement, and this came up in our joint commission, our task force with the county commission, is really them wanting to see it, and it made me realize I'd like to see it, too, is I do think we need to be having, and maybe we'll have it this year, and I don't know, a yearly end-of-year report on progress for the strategic plan that's actually put out publicly. So I would like that to be something added as far as communication.
Thank you. Ms. Bounds?
Yes, to Ms. Bab's point, it might be a good idea, given that we, what you, Dr. Rieswick, tell us what all those were, that we be more specific when we're putting this document out. If you want to say advisory councils, and then put pack, tack, and fact in parentheses, but I think it does probably need to be expanded upon a little bit there, or renamed.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you. Just two other ones. One question on Knox supports, so on the Knox Leads part. Are you ready to move to that?
Yes.
Okay. On the Knox supports, the goal of reducing absenteeism, I was remembering something else under that goal. Is there something else around community support, community partnerships that we need to have under that, Dr. Rieswick?
Thank you, Ms. Horn. There were, we have kind of three big metrics, one for each one of those is kind of like the one to bring attention to that, but there are also sub-points. And part of both the supports and reads are to build pipelines to families and to communities that currently exist that we would just tag along to other organizations for.
Okay, so you were really just highlighting one per?
Correct. It's kind of our big metric, so we can measure against it.
Okay. All right. And then the other, the other piece on the mission statement, I guess I would like to just look at the mission statement and really maybe expand it a little bit, and think about this as our way of dreaming a little bit for our kids and what we envision for them, lifelong learners, that they are, you know, becoming contributing members of society, that kind of thing, whatever. I don't have the exact verbiage that I'm thinking of, but just something so that we're dreaming a little bit, maybe not such a clinical little response, but something that just really communicates, kind of wraps this whole thing up with what we truly envision for our kids. So that's just kind of a thought. So.
That's fine. Actually, what we used was a mission statement that a previous board, I guess, adopted. So since there's not been any other adoption by a board, we didn't have anything else to go from, but we'd be glad to develop something else and seek your approval for it.
Thank you. I have a suggestion I'll send you. Thank you.
Excellent. Ms. Bounds?
But is there a differentiation? Because this mission statement above our names sounds like, not a system-wide, which I'm not opposed to this, but it sounds more like the Board of Education mission statement. Do we have another one that's like a system-wide one that would envelop more what Ms. Horn's talking about, and kind of get away from our last one, something succinct that is memorable and people can grab hold of?
Carly, I know, I don't, I'm not aware of anything else. This is what's on the plaque, hanging in the smallest boardroom, behind the main boardroom over at the Andrew Johnson Building. So that's where this was taken from. And of course, I've been around a long time. There have been different mission statements for the Board of Education. So let us take a crack at developing something for you, and then y'all can determine what you don't want or want about it, so.
Do you mind? Thank you, Madam Chair. Because I think here's what I'm seeing, is that I love, 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 love the whole Knox Leads, Knox Reads, Knox Advances, Knox Supports. And then you get to the mission statement, and it's all about us. And if we're going to involve the whole community, like we're trying to do with the Knox Leads, Knox Reads, Knox Advances, and Knox Supports, then I think that it needs to be, if this is the only mission statement we have, it needs to be more encompassing of the whole community. I don't mind a separate mission statement saying we're the governing body, you know, we, this is what we want. But I just think there needs to be a mission statement that's more inclusive if, to go along with Knox Leads, Reads, Advances, and Supports. Does that make sense?
It does. And Ms. Bounds, just for clarification, Ms. Cotten, he just gave me the history on this mission statement. And Mike, you may or may not have been on the board, but it was a prior board that during a, during their retreat, had a facilitator come in and walk them through a specific mission statement for the board. So that, and you're right, that is a very different animal than what it would be for our system. So thank you. Ms. Bab?
I just want to speak to this point, that I actually, going through this, started Googling our mission statements. And what's really interesting, the first mission statement that comes up if you Google Knox County Schools' mission statement is the Security Department's mission statement. And what I kind of realized is there are a lot of different mission statements for different departments of the schools, and it took me going to the board site to find this mission statement. With that being said, I think we do need, I think there is a big differentiation. And I do think our school system could use a mission statement, which I think it needs to be more lofty than what this is. And I think we need to decide, do the board, does the board need its own mission statement separate, or is there a big one? So I think that's kind of a discussion to have.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I agree. I think that's what, you know, what I was thinking, something that's, you know, we can put a little heart in. And I think, I mean, my opinion would be that the board's mission statement would be to support our school system's mission statement. So I don't think we need another one. I think we just need a good mission statement for our school system, and that that's what we'll support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, let me ask a question. Do you, so do you want us to try to do something, or would the board just like to come up with?
What's the pleasure of the board? Do we want to collectively work on one? Do we want to ask the staff to bring us one?
Oh, I was just going to jokingly say, I heard Ms. Horn say she was going to offer one up. So it doesn't matter to me. I think if the board wanted to submit some suggestions, maybe it would be a starting point for the staff to work with. So, well, I'll ask you with that, Ms. Horn.
Ms. Horn's got a good one. I can just.
No, I'll just tell you, you know, this conversation began months and months ago with my, with looking at the seven keys of success from a couple of other districts. So I just looked at a couple of those, and so that's what I've sent to Ms. Harrington that she can take a look at. It's just another district's mission statement that is kind of a lofty, bigger vision. And so that's what I've sent to her. So if anybody has, you know, other things they want to add, or would like to see incorporated, maybe you can send it to her, and she can work on that. So that's just to close my thoughts.
Oh, I was laughing. Forgive me, I was laughing. Poor Carly, she's just got another thing on her plate. But I will, I can give you a little history on the security mission statement coming up, because there was a day, Ms. Massey, you will remember for sure, where every department was charged with sitting down and writing a mission statement. So I'm not surprised that when you Google it, you get, you know, get them from so many different places. Mr. Norman?
Thank you. I do think it's important, very important for us to have something that we agree on. I don't, I'm not very comfortable with this particular mission statement, so I would, I would like to have the opportunity to offer some ideas and share ideas with other people that are on this board. Yes.
All right. Are there any more comments on the Knox Leads, Reads, Advances page? All right, seen. Staff, do you, do you have any questions or clarification that you need from us before you go back and make some of these revisions? Anything come to mind? Mr. Davis? Dr. Davis?
No, I can't think of anything at this time, but I'm glad to do anything that you need to assist in the process.
All right, all right. Thank you. Thank you for that. So is the, is the board's desire to have a new mission statement also written to be included in this document before we go to print? All right. Then let me encourage each of you to think hard and to submit some suggestions to Ms. Harrington. And I appreciate that Ms. Horn and Mr. Norman have both got some ideas already. Ms. Bab?
Well, I do think we need to do it kind of simultaneously, because I do think your mission statement is up here, and our strategic plan, I mean, which I think would, but I mean, it needs to follow it. So I don't think it can be done totally separately.
I agree. I agree. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you, Board. Moving along, the next bullet point is discussion of special ed staff recruitment. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, at this time, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ms. Missy Drennan and Dr. Brooke Rosser are going to make a presentation to the board. So we'll do this before we get into the budget conversation. So at this time, I'll just turn it over to Missy and to Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Thank you, Madam Chair. So as we approach the recruitment time, I went to Dr. Rosser and said I would really like to really activate our department in recruiting, because as you all know from when I was here in the fall, we started out the school year with 21 vacancies. And we have several of our teachers that are going to take advantage of the retirement incentive. And so that led to this discussion and this presentation. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rosser, and then I'll come back at the end to answer questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. So I am going to kind of walk you all through the presentation I put together. This just kind of gives you all some background and context around what we're looking at. And then I will jump right into the three separate proposals that we are recommending for approval by this board. So the first slide kind of talks about what we know as it relates to anticipated need for special ed teachers at the elementary level. So on average, each year, we hire around 25 elementary certified sped teachers, and four in pre-K. Based on what we know currently about projected vacancies going into the 1920 school year, in addition to the above-noted numbers, we'll have five sped elementary teachers we'll need to find, in addition to three school psychologists, with the addition of one projected addition of a school psychologist, and then three speech-language pathologists, with the potential addition of four projected speech-language pathologists. So that's what we're looking at for elementary. The next slide, sorry, I didn't bring a clicker. Next slide takes a look at middle and high school. So on average, at the middle and high school leverage, levels, we see average attrition around 25 for each level, so that's a total of 50, and roughly one facilitator retirement at that level. In addition to those projected numbers based on annual attrition, we're anticipating an additional eight sped teachers, and notably five vision specialists that we'll need to fill going into the 1920 school year. So kind of what's the big picture? Here's what we know heading into 1920 school year. On average, we're looking at going, we're going to likely need to hire between 80 and 95 new sped teachers for the district. In addition to those teachers, we're also going to need to look at hiring seven speech-language pathologists, four school psychologists, and five vision specialists. For context, on average, each year, we typically hire anywhere from 50 to 60 new special ed teachers. So this is a significant jump going into the 1920 school year. So I thought it might be helpful to provide a little context as it relates to the big picture as around recruiting, particularly in the field of education. So the graph that you can see up there is a study that was conducted by UCLA, and it looks at college freshmen's interest in the teaching profession. As you can see, over the course of the last 10 years, there's been a pretty significant drop-off. And basically, what this is highlighting is that overall, the number of students who are going into the field has dropped significantly. So from a recruitment standpoint, that means the number of teachers we have to select from is significantly smaller than it has ever been in our history. So if we break that down a little further and take a look at high-need instructional areas, what you can see listed here is a study that was done by the Department of Education and published by CNN. Up top, that very long bar at the top is math, but a very close second up under that is special education. And this is, again, looking at nationwide shortages for teachers in these high-need instructional areas. So what we're up against is not unique to our district, or our region, or our state. It's definitely a national-level issue that's playing itself out across the country. So some more fun facts. Forty-seven states, including the District of Columbia, have reported having shortages specifically within the special ed teaching field, and that was last year. Data from this year is not available as of yet, but we believe that number is likely the same, if not higher. And also, important to note that 51% of all school districts, of those schools, 90% of those are high-poverty schools. So you've got schools that are already having trouble recruiting, on top of trying to recruit to. schools that are already having trouble recruiting, on top of trying to recruit teachers in a field that we've already experienced a pretty significant shortage in. So that just kind of compromises, compounds the issue of recruiting sped teachers specifically. The other important factor here, and I think that's kind of what we're seeing bear out this year, is that special ed teachers leave the profession at almost double the rate of regular ed educators. So in addition to accounting for fewer numbers of folks going into the field, we also are now having to account for the rate at which people are leaving the field, particularly in this space. Most cited reasons for turnover are salary and poor working conditions. And then unrelated to that is the anticipated shortage for school psychologists is close to 15,000 nationwide, and that'll be by 2020. We're heading into the 1920 school year, and so that will be next year. So in addition to sped being an area where we've seen shortages, they just now have started really beginning to track school psychology as a shortage area as well, and it's pretty significant nationwide. So here's one of the biggest challenges that we're up against as it relates to the fields of speech pathology, hearing, and audiology. There are only four universities in the state of Tennessee that offer degree programs and certifications in either of these areas. The two universities with asterisks by them currently have no students enrolled in those programs, which means they won't be putting any out, or that will be graduating in the course of the next year.
Who doesn't have any enrolled?
That will be graduating. The University of Tennessee and Tennessee State will have any that will be graduating in the next two years. So then we've also got closest universities that offer vision programs. There actually are no universities within the state of Tennessee that offer degree-seeking programs in this area. So in order to actively recruit these teachers, we are going to have to look beyond what's right here in our backyard. What's listed here is what the supervisor staff in Student Support Services have identified as some of the best universities with these programs. These are also those that are likely closest to us in terms of region for recruiting So as we know, Knox County does continue to be one of the lower-paying districts in our region, and that makes it exceptionally challenging for us to be competitive when it comes to recruiting the best and the brightest, but also the best as it relates to fields where there already are very slim or low numbers. So the other big thing that we took note at in the process of working on this proposal was taking a look at what some of the other districts across the state are doing in order to address this need. Because as I mentioned, it's definitely nationwide, but it's also something that our fellow districts are seeing across the state. I'll highlight some of those examples as we kind of walk through the proposal. So currently, what we offer sped teachers is what we offer to all of our high-need instructional areas, which would be our math, science, world languages, ELL, and sped. They receive a $5,000 signing bonus, which is taxed on that full bonus amount. So it actually comes out to being roughly around $3,200 after tax. Those payments are distributed to educators typically during late October, early November. And if the teacher leaves within three years of starting with the district, they're required to pay that amount back at a prorated amount. So what we'd like to propose is that for sped teachers this year, we look at increasing that amount to $7,000 and transitioning it from a bonus to a stipend. Seemingly nuanced around the language, but a stipend would eliminate that bonus tax that comes off the top of the bonuses that we're currently paying out. The other thing we'd like to propose is that we transition from using this fund, using these funds as a bonus structure, but also using them from a retention standpoint. So instead of paying it out all at one time, we'd like to propose paying it out in an incremental structure over the course of three years, respectively in year one, $3,000, year two, $2,000, and year three, $2,000. So one of the highlighted examples I pulled was from Shelby County. They also have a similar structure that they're using for sped teachers, as well as their high-need instructional areas, where they pay out $750 at the beginning of the first school year, $750 at the end of the first school year, and then going into the second year, a third and final stipend is paid out to those teachers. So similar structure, just over a shorter period of So the second piece of this proposal we'd like to present is around incentivizing those areas that we highlighted before as it relates to Student Support Services, specifically speech-language therapists, school psychologists, hearing specialists, vision specialists, and audiologists. Currently, we do not have any incentives for folks who are certified in those areas. And so what we'd like to propose is that we use, that we add them to the standard $5,000 signing bonus or stipend. But we'd like to specifically propose that that be offered to them upfront, particularly given, if you go to the next slide, given, again, what we know about the proximity of those universities. We know more than likely if we're going to find folks that can come in and fill those positions, we're going to have to look out of state. So the thought is that if we're able to offer a $5,000 signing bonus, that could be leveraged as a relocation support donation, or relocation support bonus, to help further incentivize folks to come from out-of-state to Knox County, and subsequently relocate to take on positions with our district. Kind of again, an acknowledgement that there are statewide shortages in these field areas. Two examples of what some other districts in our state are doing. Elizabethan is offering a 5% increase to the base salary for folks who are in those hard-to-staff areas, specifically speech, language, and pathology. Kingsport has also recently adjusted their pay schedule so that they will allow teachers coming in with experience outside of the public education sector to receive those years of, credit for those years of experience, essentially bumping them up on the pay scale. And then one other final example was in Tullahoma, where speech pathologists and speech psychologists positions have been added to the district's listing for hard-to-staff positions, and subsequently are eligible for the $5,000 bonus offered by their district. So the last piece of this is in an effort to incentivize our current teachers who either have an existing certification in sped and are currently not using it, and/or who might be interested in adding on a secondary certification in sped. Lipscomb University is offering a very unique program. It's four courses exclusively online. It's hosted during the summer. I think it runs, I think the final practice date is late June. So ideally, you could have teachers certified and ready to roll by the start of the 1920 school year. You're only eligible if you currently hold a Tennessee teaching license. I think there's 25 seats that they run in this program each summer. And so we'd love to look at a process that would allow us to incentivize our current teachers who might be interested in securing a secondary certification and taking on a position in a sped classroom, to do so with a little support from us. So the proposal here is, we do currently have tuition reimbursement that is available for folks. One of the critiques that we frequently hear is that you've got to have the money in order to pay it, and then be able to be reimbursed for it. And a lot of our folks simply don't have what it costs to enroll and pay out tuition. So one of the things we'd like to propose is that we transition this idea around tuition reimbursement to tuition support, whereas people who were interested in securing the secondary sped certification would have tuition support paid out upfront to the university to help them secure what only would take the course of one summer to complete and have them certified and ready to go by the 1920 school year. Based on the district's current policies, the tuition support that they will be eligible for wouldn't cover the full amount, but it would cover close to half. So my thought is that that might help to incentivize people who might not otherwise be interested in securing the secondary certification to do so without that financial barrier. The other piece of this that we like to also recommend is that because these folks would be becoming sped teachers for the first time, they would subsequently be eligible for that initial $7,000 bonus, and that would incentivize them to remain in that position over the course of the three years. A good example of this is in Marshall County. They have agreed to start reimbursing up to $3,000 per fiscal year to any certified person obtaining an add-on endorsement in sped. And this is in direct response to that program that Lipscomb has put out and is going on, I think their third year. Everyone's favorite question. How do we pay for this? Well, we actually already have funds allocated to cover what would fall under these areas. As far as tuition reimbursement goes, the current budget allocation is $46,000, and year-to-date spending on that is $0. For signing bonuses, we currently have $560,000 allocated, and current year-to-date spending on that is 399K. So my proposal would be that we do actually have funds already allocated in the budget, at least to cover year one of rolling this proposal out. I'm hoping that's compelling. Questions? I know that was a lot.
Yeah, I just have a question. Do you know for that Lipscomb sped endorsement, what the total cost is for them to take the class, for classes?
I sure do. So the cost is $477 per credit hour, and it's four courses. Each course is three hours. So the total is roughly $57,000, or $5,700, sorry.
Okay. Ms. Owen?
I've talked to several very experienced special ed teachers, and when they, when they see this, they want to know, well, what about me? I've dedicated my life to Knox County schools, and there was no sign on bonus when I came in. Do we have any thoughts on any kind of incentive for folks who have been long-term employees and who choose to stay for an extended time? Maybe, maybe if they stay past 15 years.
So I'll be honest, the primary issue in, in presenting this proposal is to address the gaping hole that we are anticipating. Eighty to 95 teachers is unprecedented. We will not have, we will not be able to find that many people. They're just simply are not, they're just not being put out at that rate. So the focus here really, really was specifically on trying to get folks in to fill the vacancies we know that we'll have. But certainly, some additional thought, I agree, does need to be given to how do we continue to retain the talent that we do have.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the funds that are available, was that just, was that to cover all of the initiatives? Do you think the funds that you have left over will cover all of the initiatives, or was that just the, the third one, the final one?
They should definitely be able to get us covered for year one. We've worked, we're working with the Finance Department now to project out what the full three-year cost, because again, for that first initiative piece, that's a three-year payout. So we'd have to look at what that looked like over the course of the two to three years. But in terms of what's already been allocated for this fiscal year, there are funds in order to go ahead and get this started. And the primary pressing issue is that recruitment season has started. My first year is tomorrow. So if this is something, this is initiative that we're going to roll out, we definitely want to make sure that we're doing so in a way that allows us to maximize what's left of recruitment season.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess what I would say from this is that I can see Ms. Owen's point, how discouraging it would be, because it's very tough work. And for those people that have given their entire careers to working in special ed. But I do appreciate you putting all this together and all the different ways that you're trying to address it, particularly the proposed incentive for staying on for a certain number of years. But I would like to see, and I can support this initiative, I would like to see however, that we address the working conditions as well, because I think just to address the financial part of it may help on the front end to get those people into our system. But we will not keep them here if we don't address the toughness that happens within those classrooms and the working conditions that those people endure day in and day out. So that would be my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Bounds. Ms. Hatterfield?
If we can go back to the slide with the $7,000, and it's just clarification that I'm asking. I don't. Keep scrolling. Thank you. Yeah, right there. So could you give some, let me know the rationale behind the, the number 7,000, as well as the rationale with splitting it 3, 2, 2 versus any other order?
So no necessary rationale around the 3, 2, 2. The thought there is, one, again, because people know what are historically what we've offered to sped teachers, they know that that upfront $5,000 signing bonus has always been available. One, upping that number is part of it, that to differentiate and to elevate this above the other areas where we're currently offering a signing bonus. Two, the other big piece of this was around eliminating that bonus tax. So we were telling people, you get a $5,000 signing bonus. But when everyone gets those checks in October and November, and it's been taxed at that full amount, and they realize, oh, it's actually closer to $3,200. That was a question that we got pretty frequently. So the other piece of stiping a room, the other piece of building it out as an incremental pay structure was around, one, trying to eliminate the hit that folks were taking off of that $5,000, because it was being taxed at a bonus rate. And by distributing it out over the course of the three years, it's not taxed on that full bulk amount. So they actually get more of what's being paid out, essentially. Did I address your question?
It does. Yeah, it does. Especially with, there not being a concrete rationale with, with the 3, 2, 2. I just, when I seen that, I, I think it's more of a carrot for to get the $3,000 the third year, just so we can keep them there for that long time. And that's just me just looking at it. I have no evidence behind that.
Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As to the point about working conditions, it's, it's my suspicion that that's a much bigger issue than the monetary one. But that's just from, you know, calls that I've gotten and, and so on. So I, my question is, do we have policies within our system that address working conditions such as protections for special ed teachers in situations that put them in harm, or put them in, 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 you know, say, a bathroom? A female has to take a male to the bathroom. Do we have policies? Just curious.
Yes, sir, Mr. Norman. We do not, we follow the same kind of protocol in all of our schools. Two staff are always required when we're assisting in a restroom, whether that just be that we're there to make sure children, if a child has stability issues. But we always have two staff people present.
That's a, that's a policy statement.
We have it, yeah.
In the bathroom.
It's our practice, yes. I mean,
It's a practice, or it's a policy?
It's written in the, it's written, I'm sorry. We train all of our staff on how to, how to help us assist a student in the restroom. It's part of the training protocol that our OT and PT department utilize when they train staff to assist in restrooms. So it's, it is, it is written. It's not in our board policy, but it's written in our, in the practices that we do in our special education department.
Good. Thank you.
I did want to clarify one point, because I think that, that we, when we're, the, I'm sorry, the slide about the University of Tennessee Speech Language Program, they do have students enrolled. It's the audiology and vision that we really are challenged with. There's not, there aren't programs that are meeting the needs close by. The challenge for our speech language, and I know that because I teach it, I teach a class for them every semester, is that we are not as competitive. I mean, they can go into the private sector and the hospital. So having that incentive for them is really important as well.
Thank you. Ms. Bab?
I do have a question on the recruitment. I mean, I just personally know so many of my teacher friends who've gotten out. It's not because of working conditions or anything else. It's them starting families and staying home. Do we do anything about keeping a database of some of those people, and at this point, going back to some of these people that have left us, trying to recruit them back?
Absolutely. We actually talk to folks about Job Share. We deal with, or anybody that's, we know that is not currently working, we'll reach out to do short-term fill-ins for pregnancy leaves, or for other types of medical leave. So we stay in contact.
Sorry. I'm trying. I'm trying here.
No, I'm good. Me too.
Has any consideration been, or have, have numbers been run on perhaps adding these teachers to the supplement?
All special education teachers?
Well, since that's a-
I mean, we have not run the numbers specifically. We, have we talked about that? Yes. If you'll, and I'm trying to remember what year Rodney Russell did all of those listening sessions. Ms. Coates may be able to help me with that. But every single one of those groups, and those were all, you know, groups of teachers, every single teacher group came back with the recommendation. It was the differentiated pay discussions that he had across the district. One of the number-one recommendations, other than, of course, teacher raises, was that there should be a supplement for special education teachers unanimously, every group he worked with. So that's been an ongoing discussion. It's just been that the budget really hasn't lent, lent itself to that opportunity.
Now, our psychologists get a supplement?
The psychologists do have a supplement.
Do our speech and language?
Our speech and language also have the L.
And do our vision?
No.
Again, I don't know what those numbers would look like, but my, my thought in possibly looking at that is that- looking at that is that even with these stipends and these signing bonuses, it's kind of almost a one-shot deal. And even the $7,000 stipend, it's like you, you risk making less money the fourth year than you would the third year, or it would be a break-even kind of thing, whereas the salary supplement at least keeps building. So, just a suggestion.
No, we'll certainly-
But I like the work that you've done.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Just for, to clarify for the board, the difference in those numbers on a per-check basis, which is an easier way to look at it, I think, for some of our employees. Looking at a $5,000 bonus, which is really a $3,200 bonus, I did it that way and took that $3,200 and divided it by three years and by 12 checks, and that comes out to just under $89 a check. Taking the $2,000 and dividing it by 12 checks in one year, so that was the $7,000 option there, at 2,000 divided by 12, it would be $167 per check, and the 3,000 a year would come out to 250 per check. So, it's significantly different.
But there's still some tax to that, isn't it? You were just saying it wasn't taxed as much.
Yeah.
All right, so if, if, if the board ultimately approves this, are you going to be able to find them? Even with this, it's pretty discouraging.
I start tomorrow. And yeah, I mean, that's definitely my hope. I think this would at least get us in the game, because I'll be frank, right now, we don't stand a fighting chance.
We can't compete.
At least not for the schools that are in our region, and those are typically going to be our best shots in securing folks. So, this would definitely be, I think, a game changer, particularly in some of those Students Report Services areas, because we are going to have to look out, we are going to have to be more creative, and it's, it's always a little easier if you've got something that feels, that feels like it's an enticing treat.
Thank you. Ms. Horn?
Well, I guess I was just going to say, of course, this is handicapping you, because you're just bringing it to us now and you have recruitment fairs tomorrow, right? So, is there a suggestion from staff as to how we deal with that?
I was going to say, we would love to be able to start tomorrow, but we know that that requires the vote of the board. That is her first one. There are several. I mean, we, we know the importance of the recruiting trips she's taking further away, because there, you know, we've checked around our local colleges. The University of Tennessee has 12 graduates and we're having a luncheon for the folks that are local and going to kind of try to, you know, woo them our way. And we have about 20 that are coming out of Carson Newman. So, then those, so those, again, and we know that some of those people are going to go back home to wherever home is. So, we want to make sure that she has the tools when she's out to try to bring people to Knoxville.
And I was just going to add too, from the standpoint of services, we're, we're going to have to provide, we, by law, have to provide the services. So, we can either do it by our own employees or we can pay somebody else to do it. And I think that's the, the more expensive option is to pay somebody else to do it. In terms of the dollars, we, we feel like, at this point, be sure I understand, we have the dollars for this year, it's the future years that, that are in question, and I'm not sure, again, I, I know Mr. Snyder's going to do a budget presentation for us. I don't know that any numbers have been built in for that at this point. So, God like to start tomorrow, but I, maybe, maybe we just need to, to bring that back to the board as part of the budget, that, hey, here's what, you know, the future costs. I don't want us to make an obligation to somebody that come and then us not be able to fulfill that obligation. So, again, I guess we'd like to look at those numbers too before we get started, but yeah, I think it's important that we get started soon.
Thank you, Ms. Horn.
I guess my question would be, if you have the funding to cover it within your budget right now, do we need to approve it at this point for this year? I guess we, the question would then become the year two and year three stipend, so, but you have the money to cover it this year. So, I guess that's my question, would, technically, would it need approval?
Well, my, my answer, I guess, is yes. If we're going to be expending these funds, board approval to, to do that, then that way, then we know that you're supportive of that, of us moving in that direction.
And I will note that at the district-wide recruitment fair last year, we rolled out on a new, newer initiative where we did lots of onsite interviews. Sped, I think, has always done them at that event, but because we promoted that and we added some online registration, we did a lot more last year to hype that up. So, I think that was a far more fruitful opportunity. So, ideally, best and worst-case scenario is if we could have something defined and definitive in place by then, I think that would definitely be probably one of our best shots. The recruitment fair typically March 2nd is our last big shot at locking down the folks you really want, because after that, it's, it's fair game, it's an open marketplace. And so, if we can secure those folks that day and get them signed up, then I think that would probably help us out, help us reach that 80 to 90 number a little sooner rather than later.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Appreciate you bringing the need to us, certainly. Before we move to the next item, I'd like to call a 10-minute recess. We'll come back at 6:40, 6, 6:45. Thank you. I call this meeting back to order. Moving on to our next agenda item, it is preliminary fiscal year 2020 budget overview. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, Mr. Snyder's going to present to, to you the work that's been done on the budget, a little bit of budgeting 101, I guess, is built into this too, so, so that everyone can get an understanding of, of where the money goes. The big bulk of it, of course, is, is personnel, that salaries and benefits, roughly 81% of the budget goes along the, spent in, in those areas. I guess just a couple of things before Mr. Snyder gets started too. I mean, some uncertainty around this year from the standpoint of having a new governor. The governor's not going to make his budget presentation, I think, until early March. So, we'll be well into the process that we're into, well, actually, we're well into it right now, but, so we won't, and even in March, we won't, all we can do is base, base what Knox County might get based on prior year. So, we won't get our first estimate from the state BEP funds until probably mid-April. We won't get our final statement until July in terms of BEP. And then, on the local level, obviously have a, a new mayor, and we're trying to, right now, track sales tax and also track property tax. Probably have a little bit better idea about property tax after the month of February, because I think that's when the, when it's due and not be delinquent. Sales tax, sales tax is tracking pretty good right now. Again, we won't know about December until sometime in the month of February, because it runs a couple of months behind, but sales tax projections are looking pretty good right now, so that's in our favor. I'd just like to say, from the standpoint of priorities, because we did not give a, our employees a salary increase last year, other than step increase, and I think the board's talked about this, so we, we want to make sure that this year, that the priority is salary increase for our employees. As some of you know, textbook purchases, we, we woefully behind in purchases. We did purchase science textbooks this year, but in the good years, even when we bought textbooks, that was generally done out of fund balance. And right now, we don't have a fund balance that, that can support purchasing four or five million dollars' worth of textbooks each year. So, the social studies that I believe is the adoption for the coming year, and, and that's somewhere around the 4 million, 4.2 million dollar figure, when we talk about salary increases and, because 4% has been the number that we've talked about, we've looked at what, what that would cost. It's about $14 million, and Joe will get into this in a little bit more detail, but $14 million to do a 4% raise for all employees. And then, of course, you've got the cost for step increases. I don't want to take Joe's presentation away from him, but just to, just to talk about some of the major impacts. And remember last year too, in terms of the salary increase that we didn't give, we opened two new middle schools and that was, I think, maybe 4.7 million dollars. Also, a good portion of the funds that we received went to, went to benefits. Insurance, health insurance for employees, of course, not all employees have health insurance, but we had to put a significant amount of the revenue into health insurance and then also TCRS, the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, up the percentage a little bit. So, that hit our budget pretty hard. And then we had an initiative, a third-year initiative with transportation, where we put about a million dollars, I think, into transportation. So, so, and teachers and employees did get a step increase last year, but again, those that have topped out would not have seen any increase. So, the board has talked about adding an additional step, so there's an expense to that as well. So, just to, from a priority standpoint, I think salaries, salary increase has to be what we look at for this year and how do we get there, based on what we're seeing right now, the projections with expenditures and, and what the trend has been in the past for revenue. So, so Joe, I don't think I, I hope I didn't steal too much of your thunder there, so I'll let you jump in.
No, no, you're good. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, Madam Chair, members of the board. So, yeah, I, I want to talk a few minutes about where we are in the process, in addition to some of the things Mr. Thomas has talked about there. And just kind of give you a status check on where we are and look at some of the overviews as far as revenues and potential expenditures go. And then, at the end of this, dive into our staffing discussion a little bit and where we are in that process. And then, at the end, hopefully get some feedback from you guys on, on the budget moving forward. So, if you look at your first sheet, this is a sheet you guys have probably become too familiar with over the last year or so. And if you look at it, it's divided into the stages of the budgetary process, the budget build process, as we call it. And, and we've enlarged a certain section of it. And this is, this is not in any sequential order, so we, again, it's organized by, by the, what, what period of the process we're in there. So, we're, we're really knee-deep in the staffing part of it right now, and that starts back in the fall. We started working with Dr. Ries with his team, Mr. Thomas, the executive staff, and just talking about what does, what does staffing look like potentially for the 1920 school year? And that begins, it amps up towards Christmas, whenever we get our enrollment projections for the new, for the upcoming school year from the enrollment office. And then we take those and during that same frame of time, we're looking at, okay, what are our potential initiatives and priorities for the upcoming fiscal year? And back to something Mr. Thomas said about personnel, and you all have heard this a lot, 80-something percent of our budget, general purpose budget, is in, in, and the benefits and taxes associated with those. And so, the staffing part of this budget build is, is a really, a really critical process. And so, a lot of the work you see right now that's going on is, is what will impact the budget come April, whenever it's, it's up for y'all's vote. Just a couple of things to point out here. At the same time, this is going on, the Budget Office and the Finance Team is also meeting with every department in the district, going over their budget line by line. And those aren't so heavy in staffing, but more so in your other items that are below, below the line, so to speak, and we'll look at those here in a few minutes as well. And, and so, just the last thing I'll point out on this slide is, you know, February 14th, around about that date is when we actually get back together with principals and talk to them about, you know, what, what does their allocation look like in terms of staffing for the next school year? And at any point, if you have questions, feel free to stop me in the middle of this, that's, that's fine. So, three-year revenue trend, as, as Mr. Thomas said, typically at this point in the school year, we, in the fiscal year, we know, we have a general idea based on the governor's state-of-the-state in January of what our revenue is going to look like at the state level. At the same time, I'm working with, with the mayor's office, Chris Caldwell and his office, on what local property sales tax revenues look like. But this year's a, a bit different because of, of the elections that happened. So, we don't really have any indication yet from, from the new governor of, you know, other than a few anecdotal things that he said, what kind of revenue we're going to look at. So, that, that leads to us using this three-year revenue trend at this point in time, just to kind of give us an idea of what we may be looking at. So, what you're seeing here is that the two major sources of our revenue, state and local, and then you can see the plus-minus from each budget year to the next. So, the, the first column you'll see there is, you know, from '16 to '17, what our increases look like and some decreases in there as well, and then '17 to '18, and then '18 to our current fiscal year. So, the whole point of this slide is just to show that, you know, if you take this and try to project what our potential revenue is going to be for fiscal year 20, you're looking at about $15.7 million in terms of general purpose budgeting. And then on to the next slide there, so, I want to step out of the fiscal year 20 projection for just a second and, and look at our current fiscal year. Just to kind of give you an idea of, once we know what those revenues are, you know, how do we allocate those? What are the categories we allocate those in? Salaries and wages, payroll taxes and employee benefits, again, that's the 80, 81% number that you see a lot of. So, again, most of our resources are tied up in our people. And then if you get below the line, that's everything from the payroll taxes on down, you see those are mainly just single-digit numbers. So, so, most of our, most of our general purpose budget and is wrapped up in our personnel, as this, this slide shows. And the next one, we just want to show you, okay, if you get below personnel, what are the other areas and what are the major, major items within each of those categories? So, contracted services, that's any, any item we have in the budget where we pay someone as a contractor. So, the biggest one there you're going to see is our bus contractors for transportation. And I'm not going to read through every one of these, but you can see those, the supplies and materials, electricity, sewage, school allocations, building repairs, and then other uses. Those are things, trustees, commission, charter school funding, flow-through funding for that, our closed retirement plans, we have to fund those. And then down at the bottom, you see our debt service that's paid out of our general purpose budget, the 15.7, and then our capital outlays that are also in our general purpose. So, again, the point of that is just to give you an idea of what, I think, sometimes we throw those major categories around and don't really talk about what's inside those things. So, that gives you an idea of what kind of budget we have allocated in those categories as well. So, stepping back into the fiscal year 20 conversation at this point, Mr. Thomas mentioned, and from, from the get-go, when he was superintendent, he talked about a few things, and one was the, the three initiatives, and charged our office with making sure everything we did budgetarily and financially was somehow related to those three initiatives. He also made sure we, we understood we were to be completely transparent with the process. And so, we're, we're taking that to heart. And if you, if you see the first couple of items on, on the list here, the, the salary increases and- list here, the salary increases and educational materials, these are items that, you know, while of course every budget year we try to do those, a lot of times they don't make it to the top of the page because we have other programs or initiatives that are on there, and sometimes you feel like maybe the salary scale is an afterthought, even though I can assure you that's never been the case. But Mr. Thomas has made it clear from the get-go that employee raises and textbooks for our classrooms are a big deal. The numbers there, I'm not going to read through every one of those, but just loosely looking at, if you look at salary increases, and the 4% number, as well as the step extension for those on the certified scale, and you look at textbook purchases, those two things combined, you're talking about a little bit over $18 million. And so, if you think about that for a second, and think about, okay, what's our three-year revenue trend, what's about 15.7? We're already running a deficit if we just give employee raises and buy textbooks, which if you can't do those two things, you know, what are we doing as a school district? So then you get below that, well, these other things are not really things that are discretionary. If you look at the next category there, health insurance increases, and we feel like, for the first time in a few years, that we've kind of got our arms around the anticipated increases there. I think, and Scott, you can check me on these numbers, but I think from fiscal year '16 to '19, we had about a $12 million budget increase, just in health insurance alone over those three years. I think, right now, we're projecting about a $2 million number, and as we get closer to the budget season, we'll have a better number on that. The closed retirement plan, you've heard of those, that CDA plan, disability plan, and there's another plan that makes those up, that's going to go up due to the, just as most closed retirement plans, as the number of people paying into it decreases and the number of people drawing from it increases, the employer typically has to pay more of that burden. Then our TCRS plan, those teachers or employees who are still on what we call the legacy plan, that went up significantly this current year. Fortunately, it's only going up, I think, from 10.46 to about 10.63 this next year, which we're calculating at this point about a half million dollars on that. The other items down through there, you know, the early literacy grant that Mayor Burchett had, it's scheduled to sunset after this year, and that's about a $900,000 potential impact on our budget if we pick those employees and materials up into our general purpose budget. And then we have just what we call district-level areas, and I mentioned earlier, our office right now is probably met with 75 to 80% of every department in the district, and we're talking through line by line the items in their budget, and try as hard as they can to try to make cuts, in some cases, they can't. I mean, you can't control utility costs, or maintenance of buildings, things of that nature. So we're looking at every fixed expenditure, as well as those that are discretionary in nature, and trying to figure out what kind of potential impact is that going to have on the budget. Charter school funding, this should be the last year that Emerald, I think they're adding one more grade level this year, so we're looking at about a $525,000 impact to our budget there. And then the bottom part really is centered around staffing, which is, we have a number of FTE that we've added this current fiscal year, and this typically happens once the budget's approved, school starts, and then ADMs change a bit, or you have unanticipated needs in the classroom, your ELA population increases, the number of nurses you may need. So these are items that are added back to the budget, and so we're now looking through those as we're talking about staffing with the schools as well, and seeing how many of those are we going to end up adding to our recurring budget for fiscal year '20, and we'll figure out the impact of that as well and add it as soon as we have it. The staffing adjustments, which is the last item there, that's part of what I want to talk about next, which is, as you guys know, in a public school system, you don't, when you talk about revenues, you really don't have the ability to raise prices or increase your profit margin on whatever it is you're working with. So the only way, the only way to find money is through cutting expenses. And back to the few screens we saw, we're continuing to comb through everything that we consider below the line, but the biggest part of our expense is in personnel. And so, that's, we're going to look at a few of those slides in just a second. But the bottom part there, all these things added up, and these are very preliminary numbers, and so keep that in mind as we go through the process, and they're subject to change based on any, you know, future information we may receive. If we do everything on the sheet as it is right now, you're talking about $27 million in need, and about, back to the revenue number, 15.7. Bit of an issue there, and how do we make that up is the issue facing us in the next few months. So if you look at the next slide there, Eve. Okay, so before we get into-
One question, Joe.
Yes.
This difference of 27 million, that's not including the estimated 15 million additional?
Right.
Okay, so-
Yes, yeah, that's strictly, that's strictly just anticipated increase in your expenditures. That would be offset by the 15 potential million in revenues.
So the difference, and I know this is so rough, is more like 11 or 12 million?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So the next slide, this was in your budget packet from last year, but we just, we developed this a little bit further to give a bit more useful information to it. So the BEP formula category just shows you, and those of you that are familiar with the BEP formula know how it works, they fund us a certain amount of FTE, and they fund us based on the fiscal capacity index, or basically the county's ability to chip in and help cover the cost of the FTE. So if you look at the top, and I'm not going to read through every one of these either, but teachers, the BEP formula provides us with about 3,373 teaching positions, and then their average salary number, they use is $47,150, but based on Knox County's ability to pay, they send Knox County about $28,000 for each one of those FTEs. If you look over the next column, we have in our current budget 3,856 teachers, and our average salary for this current school year is $49,700. So you can see, even for, so first of all, we're about, what's that, 400 to 500 teachers above the BEP formula, and so for that 400 to 500, we're paying every bit of the $49,700 locally, and then for the others that they do cover, you know, we're still kicking in additional $22,000 to $23,000 for every one of those. And that's the case all the way down the screen here. So just want to give you an idea about kind of how the BEP funding formula works there, and that's only the tip of the iceberg, and I don't pretend to know all of it, but that at least gives you an idea of local revenue versus state revenue. So all that being said, if you look at the next slide, so this gets back to where we are in the process right now. We've had just two or three conversations, we had a principals' meeting last week, we've talked with the principal advisory committee, and we've talked with PECCA about some of these things, just to kind of, to get them out there and get some conversation going. So we staff, we have staffed historically at a much richer ratio than what the BEP actually provides for us to staff at. The issue with that is, as you guys know, if you listen to the national news, I mean, districts are striking for several reasons, compensation being one, but it's not always about compensation, it's also about materials for the classroom. But then the other part of that is, and I think it was at LA Unified recently, they, one of theirs was classroom size. And so, those, unfortunately, things, those things don't always go hand-in-hand. If you're looking to, if you're looking to increase your teacher pay, unless you receive more money funding-wise, how do you do that without cutting at some point, or increasing your classroom size? So that's the dynamic at play that we're trying to figure out. How do we walk that fine line? And so, we're looking, spending a lot of time looking at, okay, here's what we staff at, what is actually going on in the classroom, what are our actual classroom sizes, just to make sure that we don't, the BEP staffs us at a 1 to 21, 1 to 25, for example, in the lower kindergarten grade levels, but those of you that have been teachers know, if you're in a classroom, that can be a handful if you staff at that level. So let me back up a second, let's, I want to talk through each of the grade bands here to show you what we're projecting to potentially do for fiscal year '20, and then we can talk about any of those you guys want to talk about. So the elementary teaching staffing ratios, you can see, if you look at those, we already used what's considered to be the BEP ratio on those. So the K3 level is 1 to 20, 4, 5, 1 to 25, and Julie Thompson and her team, they basically take our staffing enrollment projections and work through those. There are some classrooms that are, you know, below the 1 to 20 in K3, and some that are right at it, but she manages that outside of this formula and makes sure that we're within the state guidelines on that, and she has tightened that up a little bit, even more so this year, and so we're potentially going to realize a few positions from that scenario. The elementary assistant principal staffing did change a bit, if you look at the bottom, and I don't want to read through every one of these either, but the moral of this story at the bottom is that the far right, the proposed staffing ratio, she changed that a bit to allow for potentially absorbing a few assistant principal positions in the district as well at the elementary level. And let's go ahead and look at the middle school one there. This one has a bit more color on it, so I would just say, the yellow bands here, we start to, so we've seen the at-risk, and you guys have heard that for several years now. So the top part of this, at the middle school level, the BEP level, of course, the sixth grade level is 1 to 25, and the 7 to 8 ratio is 1 to 30. What we've done for the current school years in the middle band there, and so the proposed adjustment here is just taking that at-risk from a 55% factor, moving it to a 50%, and then leaving, leaving the 6 and 7, 8 that are below the 50% as they are, and taking those that are staffed at the richest ratio, which is the bottom, moving it from 1 to 20 to 1 to 21, and 1 to 25 to 1 to 26. And then the note you see there just says, okay, there may be some scenarios, and particularly this year, where if we use this suggested approach, due to the two new middle schools opening last year, there are some schools that would have seen significant staffing losses because they lost a lot of ADM over the last year to the new middle schools. So the suggestion there is that we cap any potential gains or losses at three FTEs for each school. So if the school through the formula was slated to lose five teachers, that wouldn't happen, they would lose three, not that three's not a big impact as well on a building. Middle school staffing, worked with Dr. Rieswitz and his team on, you know, how do we, how do we make sure, we want to remove any pretense of subjectivity here at all, so we, at the end of the day, we want to try to formulate things as much as possible to make it as transparent as much as possible. So the thought here was, let's take away the at-risk factor for the assistant principal and just create a straightforward ratio, or tier, if you would, based on the average daily membership at the schools. And you see the two numbers there that, based on how the district kind of sits right now, less than 600 or greater than equal to 600, but then we did, we also, you know, those that are, have the high at-risk population still have a need for more administrative staff, and so the factor we added back there was if they do have a greater than 50% at risk, then we will add an additional assistant principal at that building. And at the high school, so similar scenario at the top, we didn't adjust the at-risk any, but we said, okay, so let's take each band there, which, if you go back to the BEP to start off, they're at 1 to 30, we're currently at 1 to 20, 1 to 25, and 1 to 27. So we're saying, let's tweak that by one at each level, so 1 to 21, 1 to 26, and 1 to 28. Still, even at our, even at the top ratio, we're still a couple students below the BEP suggested ratio there. And again, you have the cap at three losses or three gains at the teaching level. Assistant principal, it's the same as the middle school, except instead of a two-tier system, due to the fact that you have a wider range of ADM in high school, that's divided up into four tiers, and they also have the greater than 50% at risk, it's an additional assistant principal position. And then the last sheet kind of summarizes that, so if we could look at that one, again, this is, this is a proposed approach to staffing, and what we've tried to find here is that middle ground between making some cuts that hopefully can get us moving in the right direction, and hopefully lead to some budgetary savings. But even if we do what's suggested here, and you look at the total, the net FTE adjustment we're talking about with teachers and APs combined, it's about 65 and 1/2 positions. That's 4.7 million roughly, so you're still, back to Ms. Hill's point, you still have, you're trying to make up 10 to 11, 12 million there, that gets part of that back, we're still depending on, at that point, you know, we're still looking at other areas of cutting, but you're still also, you know, hoping you get a good revenue here from the state and local funds. But you feel like, there has to be a middle ground between, you know, you can't just, you can't start staffing at the BEP level, and there has to be some tip to smooth this process out over a couple of years. So, that being said, that's a proposal at this point, be glad to hear feedback from you guys right now. At the same time, I would ask if any of you want to schedule a meeting with us, just call superintendent's office, and we'll be glad to talk through each of your district, you know, how it impacts, how this proposal impacts your school, or any other ideas you may have on a suggested ratio. So that's all I have at this point, be glad to take questions.
Ms. Bab.
Yes, and I'm not sure if you're the right one to answer it, but with the retirement incentive program, do we have any numbers on that yet?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Bab, the rest of the board. We actually round out about 221 that have taken the retirement incentive. And what I think that we want to look at, if we're looking at these reductions, is we want to displace the least amount of people possible. So I think that we can possibly look at the majority of those taking place as a result of the retirement incentive, as it's somewhat of a catalyst to kind of move in a direction like that.
I guess have we figured some savings from this that will help this budget, or is there any help to this budget through the retirement incentive?
And I don't want, so we're still in the middle of that process right now, honestly. We just, I think last Friday was your deadline, right? So what we're in the process of doing right now is taking those numbers, looking at if we, if the proposal is what we use, the ideal scenario would be if you're reducing it by 65, or whatever the number is up being, that there are no, that those are vacant positions. We just don't know those yet, and I know Scott's working hard with his group right now determining that. At the same time, you also have, you know, non-school-based positions that are part of that factor, so we're looking at those as well. So if they're central office positions that we're losing, or district-wide type positions, then what kind of efficiencies can we create there potentially to realize some savings?
So let me get this straight, our student enrollment is going to increase. We are looking at increasing class sizes, decreasing principal allotment.
Assistant principal.
Assistant principal.
Yes.
Allotment, still coming out millions short, and we haven't even got to capital improvements or anything else yet, is that correct?
That would be an accurate picture, yes. Again, we felt like, you know, staffing-wise, could you have taken a bigger step there and came in with, you could have, and you could have, you know, that number could be $10 million, but you have to find that balance between what can the school sustain and the principal sustain versus the budgetary side of it.
Is the only way that we can, again, we know that the subject areas that retire don't necessarily equal, you know, positions cut, so I suppose it was, it's too early to know as far as actual reduction in force, what that might look like, is that correct?
That is correct. But we're working hard to get to those numbers.
I know you are, I know everybody's working hard, I appreciate that.
Our intention on it is, not to put any pressure on you, but by the time we release these to principals, we will know that factor, as far as, you know, here's your allocation, then how many of those potentially are vacant positions versus how many of those are tied to someone who's currently in the position?
She offered to turn her line on for me, but I told her you'd see me, and this isn't anything earth-shattering, just, and I know it's tough, and Ms. Hill's probably more aware of all that's involved being chair, but to put some positive on it, I'm really thankful that we, and as a system, and the superintendent with his li- it, I'm really thankful that we, and as a system, and the superintendent with his leadership, are really trying to do those 4% raises, and textbooks, because I think we're in the problem, where we're at now because we ignored that for so many years. So the positive thing that I would say is, thank you for that commitment to teacher raises, as well as to much-needed textbooks, which we continue to hear from the public that our schools need. And then the last thing would just be the appreciation for all of you and your team and the preliminary, leading us along month by month and step by step, and getting even the timetable at the beginning is huge from when I first came on the board. So I just really appreciate all the preliminary transparency that's gone into this. So that's my positive spin to an otherwise tough subject.
Thank you, Ms. Bounce, we needed that. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Scott, just to follow up on Ms. Hill's question there in reference to the retirees, I know it's early, but I also know that at least some of the retirees have had conversations with their principal, or principals had conversation with them. Are you hearing anything at all about that, or, I guess my question would be, if you have heard any talk about it as to whether these people, some of these people would be interested in coming back on contract for next year, would, just to guess, would you say it would be under 40% or over 40% based on what you're hearing?
From the discussions that I had, myself and Mike Atkins, our retirement manager, met with over 400 people in a span of about three months, and just getting the conversation that we've had with those people, there was an overwhelming amount of people that were ready and willing to come back into a position. In our discussions, I wanted to be fully transparent, and I said, please do not make this decision contingent upon you getting a job, because that's not going to be guaranteed. And I think with us being upfront, you know, I anticipated we could have as many as 350 people that took this incentive, and I felt like that with the education we provided, a lot of people made sound decisions that maybe this would not be advantageous to them. So it's hard for me to kind of gauge on those that have accepted it, but I would say that there is a large, probably majority of those folks that would come back in a part-time capacity, and we would see some of the savings that we talked about for those positions that way.
I think you're right, based on what little I have heard, and even if they didn't qualify or get additional employment, you know, if you've taught 33 years and you're 55 years old, the benefits, you know, you can go do something else at 55, you don't have to teach, and some people would actually probably want to do that, I don't know. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is obviously a very dismal situation, but as Ms. Bounce said, I do want to thank you. I think the only positive thing we can say about it is that I do appreciate the superintendent and the finance department's getting this to us now and making it known to the public so that we can begin the discussion, so thank you for all your hard work.
Can you tell me last year what the total of our Knox County budget was?
For current fiscal year?
Yes, yes, sir.
It was, I believe our budgeted number was $485,680, is that what you're talking about?
No, the Knox County.
The local funding portion of that? It's 52% of that roughly, so I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I can.
So their total budget is roughly a half a billion?
Knox County's.
Knox County government.
I believe it's, and I don't want to quote a number, but I think it's around three-quarters a billion, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, we're obviously the biggest component of their budget.
All right, okay, thank you. All right, any other questions, comments? Well, Joe, we weren't too hard on you, were we?
No, not at all. Again, before I sit down, I do want to emphasize that feel free to call and schedule a meeting, we'd be glad to talk through any of it with you.
One more question. Assuming we want to do this, is it more advantageous to wait until we know more numbers, or, you tell us, what's the best timing for us to find out how it impacts each of our districts?
In the ideal scenario, we would already know some revenue numbers, and we wouldn't have to do some guestimating here. The issue we're up against right now is mid to late February is when HR starts their hiring process for next year. So historically, we've had to have staffing formulas rolled out by the middle of February at the latest in order to give principals time to plan for next year. So that's kind of what's driving the staffing part of this at this point.
All right, and you have already met with all the principals?
So we were at the principals' meeting last week, presented basically the same information you guys are seeing as far as staffing goes. We talked to the principal advisory committee, I believe it was, a week before last, is that right, Mr. Thomas?
Right, and basically just the methodology at that point, not what their specific situation would be, those meetings are.
Schools don't know yet what their actual cuts.
I'm sure some of them have probably taken the numbers and said, what does this mean to me, and done the math on that, but we haven't officially met with them, and I think what Joe's plan is to meet individually with each principal, starting about the 14th of February or something like that, so.
That's right, I apologize, you did say that, thank you.
What we wanted to do, and again, transparency is important this year, so we're talking about community meeting with the budget, and making sure that we put the information out there, and asking you, if you see an area we haven't been transparent in, to tell us, hey, I don't think this is clear, or I think you should look at it this way, then we'd be glad to, you know, be glad to do that, because we want all of us on the same page at the same time, going in the same direction. So hopefully this year it's going to be, the revenue situation, don't know about, but we hope the budgeting process is going to be really clear, transparent, and well-communicated.
Right, yeah, those parts that we can control, we're going to do our best to make this transparent as possible.
So where are the programs like our magnets and Project Grad, and where are those numbers?
So in our current overview that you're seeing, those have not been adjusted any based on what they are currently.
So it's at last year's or this?
Yeah, I think there is, and I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head with the Project Grad, I think there was a reduction for this current year, and it's scheduled to go up a couple hundred thousand dollars. Does that sound right?
Yeah, based on the conversations we had last year at budget, and the funding level that is currently in place is $500,000, but the conversation at that point was that the services that Grad is providing would need to be along the lines of $700,000, $700,000-plus to do what they have done this year, which is focus on the secondary level in terms of our general purpose budget. And then the county funded the difference, I guess, between, I think it was maybe $1,500,000, something like that, I believe, Joe?
That's correct.
For the total, so the board's commitment this year is $500,000. If we want those same services next year, it's in the $700,000 range.
Yes, sir.
All right, and at some point, we'll get those numbers too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bab?
I just have a question with our upcoming joint task force between the county commission and us, is this presentation going to take place? Do we know?
Yeah, so we have, you know, we were scheduled to do that back in December, and so it was more of a budgeting 101-type presentation. This, I'm not sure we had the detail that's on the expenditure overview here because we didn't have some of those numbers at that time, but it is a very similar presentation.
Okay.
And of course, we can steer it in this direction once we're in the meeting, you know, however you guys see fit.
All right, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. To follow up with Virginia, is that something you desire to see on their 20th meeting, if possible?
I think this would be a great discussion at our 20th meeting.
Is that what was all in the plan? I mean, we'll set the agenda, but are you available?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. We're planning on being there anyway, and we'd already built the presentation, I think we've already forwarded it to the group, but it's the same type of stuff, just at a higher level, but we'll be glad to drill down.
Yeah, will we have more concrete information by then about anything?
So by the 20th, you know, at that point, we should know, the staffing allocation formulas will be released to the principals at that point, so yeah, we will have that.
Thank you.
All right, no other questions or comments, we'll move along to public forum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first speaker is Sarah Bateman. As you come forward, if you would, state your name and county of residence, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Bateman, I live in Knox County, and I am one of the English as a Second Language teachers at Bearden High School. I'm also a member of the community coalition that has been making recommendations on the strategic plan draft. I contributed to the recommendation on the mental health advocacy for our students. The first reason I've come before you today is to thank you for your continued support of our students' mental health needs. One of our coalition's recommendations that there would be at least one full-time mental health professional who deals solely with students' mental and emotional needs has already been partially met at Bearden High School, so thank you for that. The second reason is to ask that in your upcoming difficult deliberations on the budget and the strategic plan, the mental health needs of our students remain at the top of your objectives. The gaps that our coalition has identified include the following: inadequate staff training on suicide prevention, insufficient numbers of schools counselors and psychologists to help struggling students, limited mental health resources in the Knoxville community, and stigmatism that students face when seeking outside mental health assistance. In the 10 years that I have been teaching in Knox County, I have heard many stories of hardship and heartbreak from my students. These stories that my students share often leave me feeling helpless when all I can do is direct them to the very limited resources we have at our school. I have sat with many students in meetings with their counselors on multiple occasions, working through exceedingly distressing issues that have left me personally feeling drained and very concerned on my students' behalfs. Several of my students were referred to mobile crisis after such conferences. Every such conference strengthens my belief that more adequate resources would help prevent these students from reaching this critical point. I was therefore surprised and elated when it was announced late last semester that Bearden would be one of the beneficiaries of the Helen Ross McNabb counselors. I have already met with our counselor and have started seeing the benefit that she can bring to our school community. A qualified mental health provider in our building brings inestimable value to our students, and I am confident that this service has the ability to save lives. While the current caseload at our school is small, only 25 students at a time, when we have over 2,000 students, I am hopeful that we may be able to increase this in the future with additional counselors. According to the National Institute for Mental Health, one in five students ages 13 to 18 experiences a severe mental disorder at some point. Our recommendation as a coalition was that larger schools should have at least one full-time mental health professional per every 250 students assigned exclusively to serve students with mental and emotional health needs by 2021. Our partnership with Helen Ross McNabb will certainly increase our ability to better care for these students. However, we know that increased mental health in students is also supported through other factors that our coalition has recommended, such as eliminating bullying and harassment, valuing diversity, maintaining cultural competency among staff, recruiting and retaining excellent teachers, reducing class sizes, and improving our special education services. As members of this school board continue to work on the strategic plan, I fervently hope that you will consider the proposals of our community coalition. Myself and the other coalition members are eager to be a part of your discussions and are available for questions on our proposals. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you. Next with Kim Credit.
Good evening, I'm Kim Credit, Knox County. I'm part of this coalition, and my colleagues and I have worked on our recommendation that doesn't cost anything. We would really appreciate your providing a workshop that was actually promised to us a few years ago in a meeting right here, so that you all will learn about your policy, because your special education policy is actually IDEA law. And we've asked over and over, and we really think that when you all understand IDEA law, we will save money, we will save money because people won't be filing lawsuits, and we won't be paying attorneys, and we will, it will lead to a more inclusive district. We have failed in the last six data reporting periods as per TDOE data. We have failed to even improve in our targets for ages six through 21. We are still at 63% when the rest of the state average has gone to over 70, and they tout this, that they've gone from 63 in 2012, 2013, I think, now up to over 70, and Knox County Schools is lagging behind at 63%, and we have failed every single even improvement measure ages six through 21. However, we have succeeded in growing leaps and bounds in the preschool numbers. We went from 3% inclusion, then jumped up to, I think, 25, then 43, and they don't even have the numbers from the last two years ever since the Blended Program was instituted. Now, kids with significant disabilities who used to be placed in segregated settings because our special ed department truly did not understand that we were obligated under IDEA law to provide a, or contract out as the first consideration, an inclusive environment. And once OSEP was about to slap our hands, finally we developed the Blended Program, and the numbers don't lie, it went from 3%, and now it's got to be up to probably about 70, 75. Almost every preschooler with significant disabilities I know is in the Blended Program. The self-contained segregated programs are few and far between. If we could just do the same for the ages six through 21, that would make a huge difference, we feel financially, and of course, what's most important is the outcome of all our students. We've got a number of proposals to put out the data that's out there, that the public should know about how much the lawsuits are costing us. I'm about to go to Nashville for the isolation restraints lawsuit, I think, you know, so many witnesses going out to Nashville, I can't even imagine. We don't have to have this happen, I do everything I can to help it not go to that level. I went to two IEP meetings today, three on Monday. I truly hate going to those meetings, but that's where the change occurs for one kid after another, and putting those together, when I can't do, and when I go as far as I can as an advocate, I have to hand it over so that it can be changed on a systemic level, and that's what I do. But I am the biggest cheerleader for things that go right in Knox County, maybe you don't know that, maybe you don't see that, maybe you don't think that, but it's true. I'm a dedicated Knox County school mom who's at the, with one senior remaining, two out in college. I really want to see this district prosper, and that means for all students. Just, if you can just learn about IDEA law, I think that will make a big difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Lance McCold.
Thank you, Lance McCold, out of Knox County. Thank you all for letting me say a few words. Sort of got a complicated message today, I want to talk about this coalition that you've heard about, and you've all have received the recommendations on the strategic plan. And I think there's some good news. And I think there's some good news here, if you choose to grab the good news and make use of it. This coalition is pretty remarkable. If you look at the members of it, there's quite a diversity of organizations involved, some big and some small, with many primary interests that are diverse. And the recommendations they offer to you were not, "Save my school, save my program, give me this for what I want for my kid." They're, "What is best for our whole school system?" Now, I'd like to ask you how many times you have a coalition come to you looking for how to make the whole school system better? So, this is a real opportunity, if you choose to pay attention. So far, most of our recommendations seems to have been ignored. If they've been paid attention to, we haven't seen the evidence of it. So, I think there's room for some improvement there. But let me just say that we were just, this last presentation is about the budget, and we all know that it's a pretty dire picture. And all the people in the coalition, all the organizations in the coalition are aware of how dire the situation is. And actually, you know, we've dealt, the people that have been paying attention to these schools for the last few years knows that, know we've had one tight budget after another, where year after year, we scrape a little bit off, we save a million here, a few hundred thousand there, just to get by, and it's year after year after year. Well, this coalition is very concerned about that. One of the members, the legal wing voters, is even holding a citizens' academy a week from Saturday. You've gotten a flyer about it, to educate the community about the school budgets. Just an indication of how concerned the community is, and all the members of the coalition that I've talked to are very concerned about the budget and would love nothing more than to support you in getting the money our schools actually need, instead of trying to figure out how to get by on what the other people tell you you're supposed to do, you're going to get. So, if you're willing to work with the coalition, or willing to encourage them, I think the coalition would be a huge ally, and I would expect most or all of the coalition to be there to support you when you ask for the money that the schools actually need. So, there's people out there in the community who want our schools to be good and are willing to put the effort into supporting you to do it. But honestly, none of this happens until the school board goes to the community, the whole community, and says, "Look, we need this money." And raising class sizes is not the right way to do it. Asking for the money you need is the way to do it. And I do believe that there are lots of people in the community who will be there to back you up when you ask for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Todd Shelton.
My name is Todd Shelton. I live at 3111 Foster Lane, South Knox County, where my kids went to school from kindergarten all the way up to high school. I'm now volunteering my time with Stop School Push Out, who is one of the other members of the coalition that's been referred to. My focus on the Knox County school system in the last three years has been mostly about the disparities in educational outcome recommendations and their place in the old strategic plan and in our school budget. We believe that no program is more important than any other program in the school system. All the priorities stressed in a strategic plan that is specific are important to some group of families, students, or teachers. The staff and teachers who implement these programs are the most important pieces of our school system. They must be given the resources and the training to be successful and have to be compensated as such. I've been told that the Knox County School's strategic plan lays the groundwork for the budget, and the coalition has operated off of that premise that was shared to us by past boards and by many of the board members here. Programs and goals in the strategic plan are what the budget must pay for. We must articulate the strategic plan so the public can understand just exactly what they are paying for. Our school system has committed to providing an excellent education for all of its students. I have actually become quite fond of that phrase, "excellent education." Some might say it's ambiguous, but I think it's pretty plain and out front. If we want to be an excellent community, we will need to have excellent schools. We cannot do all this if we do not fully fund those teachers and the programs. Along with, I fully support the other recommendations that our coalition submitted to the county. And I'm happy to say that most of the recommendations that we put in have been received well by school board members and people in the staff, the district staff. Obviously, some of the recommendations that we submitted are actually in process by this district. The problem has been finances. The coalition recommendations include compensation for our teachers and staff, reductions in class size, more English-language instructors, and more bilingual teachers, and an increased staff presence for special ed students. We also recommend more social and mental health workers for every school, more intervention skilled guidance counselors who are trained in restorative practices, PBIS, which is Positive Behavioral Intervention and Support, and cultural competency. With all of the pressures faced by our students, in particularly today in these tense times and dangerous times, these programs are more important than ever. The amount of time that we have heard, that we heard the word bullying from the CMA supporters last month, well, I guess it was the beginning of this month, I was, it was depressing. I didn't, it was something new for me to hear, that being brought up by so many different people from different parts of the school system. I am encouraged by the number of board members and the district staff who agree with these needs. I just need to say, I'll depart because I'm running out of time. We did talk to some of the staff, district staff, and they were good enough to talk with us, and we totally believe in their work. But every time we add something to the budget, they have to look and go around and find some way to drop an expense, no matter how good it might be. That's not the way that we need to fund our school system. Let the people know, and the citizens know, what we really need, and people will show up here like they do for board meetings, and they will show up at the county commission and ask for those funds.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Megan Barlow-Fogarty. I'm sure I messed up your name. You can give us the correct pronunciation.
No problem. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. My name is Megan Barrelay-Fogarty, and I am a Knox County resident. I'm the Director of Youth and Family Engagement at Centro Hispano, which is a local educational nonprofit. I'm also a member of the Latino Student Success Coalition, and we're part of this coalition that's here, but we also are representing the unique needs of the Latino students in Knox County schools. So, we're a coalition of Knox County educators, support staff, community members, parents, and teachers that formed in 2017 to increase educational success and life opportunities for Latino students in Knox County and surrounding areas. Decreasing educational disparities and supporting Latino students and families has to be an increasing priority for Knox County schools as we rapidly approach 10% of our schools being Hispanic. The coalition supports many of the goals outlined in the three-year strategic plan that's been developed. However, we have some recommendations to ensure these goals specifically address the needs of Latino and other immigrant students. These recommendations were shared with the school board members via email in November. So, our recommendations are based upon a needs assessment of Latino students in Knox County schools that was conducted during the 2017 and 2018 school year by our coalition. The needs assessment included data from online survey responses, interviews, and focus groups with students and parents. Based on this assessment, the Latino Student Success Coalition offers the following recommendations for inclusion in the strategic plan, and a lot of these fall under your second priority of, and some under the third priority of increasing school culture. So, recommendation number one was increasing the number of Latino and bilingual school staff. The lack of Latino teachers and administrators in Knox County schools, as of this point of the needs assessment, it was less than 1% of the faculty was Latino or Hispanic, is a major barrier to both Latino family engagement and student achievement. Families are less likely to feel engaged in the school environment and community if they don't feel representative and represented, and they often face barriers to communication in their own native language. Number two is to improve school environments for Latino students and families. Although Latino parents and youth mostly had very positive impressions of their experiences with Knox County schools, they also reported experiences of discrimination or other negative interactions. Particularly, what struck me is with front office staff. That's usually who they encounter, and that's who they had some problems with. Students reported being bullied for their ethnicity or immigration status, as well as negative comments by school staff that made them feel uncomfortable and unsafe. Parents reported their concerns were dismissed or ignored, particularly in interactions with front office staff. Additionally, mental health resources, as we've talked about for all students, for Spanish-speaking students and families are practically non-existent. Recommendation number three has to do with our graduating high schoolers. Students with DACA status or those who lack legal immigration status make up a growing number of Knox County school graduates. These students may have completed from kindergarten on up through Knox County schools, yet they do not qualify for federal financial aid or the Tennessee Promise Program, and they must pay out-of-state tuition at local institutions of higher education. So, for Pellisippe College, you're talking about about $18,000 a year to attend Pellisippe. Obviously, that falls a little bit outside of Knox County's purview, but our school counselors are not sufficiently trained to support students in identifying institutions and scholarships that are available to them. Therefore, many immigrant families and students lack guidance on how they can possibly pursue post-secondary education, and they're falsely told it's not a possibility for them. Our recommendation number four has to do with those students that are coming as ELL newcomers and students with limited or interrupted formal education. So, these are growing populations, mostly from the countries of Guatemala and Honduras, that are affecting the graduation rates in a number of our high schools. We recommend that, just to give some background, many of these students might also be unaccompanied minors living in the United States with extended family and often under limited supervision. They're pretty much on their own. Students support themselves or their families independently, and they are under great pressure to drop out of school at the age of 18 in order to increase their income. Students who wish to graduate are trying to gain English competency, earn the necessary credits, and catch up for years of misschooling in a very limited timeframe. So, we recommend investigating and considering alternative educational options for these students, including such programs known as newcomer academies that have seen success in other areas, parts of the world, and parts of the nation and districts. In the document that was emailed to school board members in November, we outlined specific strategies for addressing each of these recommendations. We would be happy to provide those again or answer any additional questions that you might have. The Latino Student Success Coalition would like to be considered a partner in helping Knox County schools determine how to best serve the Latino student population. So, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Carl Wheeler.
Good evening, and my thanks to the board for allowing me to speak today. We've heard a lot here relative to money and what's needs are, and how we're going to fill those needs from a financial support position. My concern is this. We have been operating, in my opinion, on what I've termed a 2010 funding base, and this is 2019. I think it's time that we look at other options, or extending those options, or those organizations that provide funding to the school board, i.e., the county, and so forth. And we've heard from several folks here already about the needs in this county, and I would encourage the county members to consider putting together a budget that meets the needs for the schools. Not what meets the needs based on last year's funding, but based on this year's funding. You know, this is 2019, and we cannot afford to be, if we want to be and provide excellent education for all children, we cannot be operating on 2010 money or 2012 money. We need 2019 money. And you all know what's happened to the school population, you know what's happened to salaries. All of those things cause our annual budget to go up. So, I encourage you to submit a budget that meets the needs based on the input that you've got from a number of us in this coalition, to include as much as you can in there and produce a budget that's fair and balanced for the entire community. The last thing I would like to say is to thank Ms. Hill, chairperson. I saw the article in the paper a couple of days ago that I took as a progressive step forward in recognizing that we need more than what we had last year or the year before that. So, I encourage you all to take a real close look at what we need, what we really need to produce the product that we want to produce out of Knox County school system. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler, and thank you for all your comments. Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry. Board forum. I apologize. District one?
Nothing.
Two? Three? Four? Five? Six? Me, nothing. Seven?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody that had sent texts and notes and things like that for school board appreciation week, so we appreciate your kindness.
Yeah. Mike? Christie? All right. Apologize. Does that take care of our business? Thank you. Motion, second to adjourn. We are adjourned.